I'd like to call the order, April 28, 2020. Board meeting, this is a another virtual meeting due to the COVID pandemic that continues on. So, clerk Seagres, can we call the roll?
All right, trustee Anthony.
President.
Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Seagres, present. Slavens?
Good evening.
Snyderman?
I am here.
Anne Williams?
Hello.
Hallminton.
Call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, roll call, please vote.
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
The, now would be the time for any citizens' non-agenda item comments, now would be the time for public comments. Do we have any public guests online?
Two members from the public, I see, are in attendance right now. If anybody would like to make a comment, there's an, oh, we had another one. There's an opportunity to raise hands, raise hands as a function, you can type in a question in the Q and A. And we can unmute you and give you an opportunity to speak. You can definitely can talk on every item as well, but.
Once again, this is the point in the agenda where if anybody would like to make any public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening, now is the time to make those public comments. Is there any public comment? Is there any public? Clerk Seagres, could you see if there's any public comment, any rate, hands raised, and if not, we'll go ahead and move on with the agenda?
We're all set.
Very good. First item on the agenda is a public hearing for the approval to amend the 2019.
Excuse me, Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we pay the bills.
Okay, do we have bills in the packet that we are approving? I don't think so.
Okay, well, I thought there were, I apologize.
It's okay. I think we've handled everything through the emergency purchase order policy process. And we may, in our next meeting, have a few items, but not this evening. Wendy, is that correct? I want to make sure I'm not misspeaking. Okay, very good. All right, so, thank you Diane for double checking on that. Now, we would like to open up a, let's see, approval to amend the 2019 CB, CD BG program annual action plan. And we have a first motion, which, call for motion to open a public hearing to hear comment on the amended plan year 2019 community development block grant program.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing to co- to hear comment on the amended fiscal year 2019 community development block grant program, CV.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion, please by roll call.
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Let me. Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Yeah.
Anne Williams?
Aye, yes. All right, in terms of a summary, on April 3 of this month, Congress announced the Corona virus aid relief and economic security act cares act, and provided funding of $5 billion in supplemental CD BG funding for grantees to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. $53 million was awarded to help local governments in southeast Michigan. Canton Township received $215,200. To expedite grantees' use of these funds, HUD is waiving certain requirements and requiring amendments to others. The Department of Housing and Urban Development requires any substantial amendment to be approved by the governing body. Therefore, we're asking the board to amend Citizens' Participation Plan, reducing the public comment current period from the previous required 30 days to a newly required five-day period. In addition, by, to bypassing the CD BG Advisory Council on the situation and bringing the program straight to the board. Additionally, we've attached detail amended the 2019 annual action plan to include COVID-19 grant dollars awarded, which includes the following programs in breakdown. Subsistence payments of $178,680. Canton Meals Connection Program, $10,000. Canton COVID-19 Testing Program, $5,000. And then administration of those programs of 21,520. This plan will be made available to the public with a required five-day public comment period starting tomorrow. And this meeting represents our required public hearing. Is there any questions or comments from any of the board members? I know Summer and I had a conversation this afternoon. Anne Marie, please.
Yes, I noticed that it did state in there, I mean, we're shortening it, and our usual process included going through the CD BG board. So are they seeing it in parallel, in case they want to make comments? Is that how it's working?
No, but it's a very good idea that we send it out to them and let them review it. I think that's something we can easily do, Wendy.
Yeah, we can send this out to the advisory council. The Citizens' Participation Plan, which includes the CD BG Advisory Council, is a Canton Township Board requirement. It's not a CD BG HUD requirement, so by all means, we should and will forward this to them to let them know this is the plan at this point in time for the month, for the spending, should the board approve this, and let them make any comments that they might have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There was some comment, now, Summer, if you want to get into some of the stuff you and I have spoken about.
Yeah, so, I called Pat earlier to talk about, I wanted to know why we broke down the funding the way that we did. I mean, he talked some about, there were a lot of programs already in the community that were delivering meals, but people really needed assistance with rent and utilities and things like that, and he and I agreed on that. And we also talked a little bit about the process for how the funding would be given out. And so, I hope to continue that conversation with Wendy and Amy Houston as those decisions are made.
Really, the net, the first step is just getting the board approval. Next step would be, for select members of the community that have been dealing through the COVID hotline, that community, very clearly should stay down the fever. Amy Houston and Patty Esselink have been leading that effort and running the COVID hotline for us and communicating correctly with residents. So now what we would have to do, if the board approves this this evening, is let Wendy's team, probably led by Carolyn, I don't want to speak for Wendy, to put together some kind of framework on what the qualifications and standard would be. We did share today through the Wayne County Grant Program, they did for small businesses, they had a rank scoring process.
Yeah, it was like a rubric, yeah.
Where they assigned a value, a point value to each of the requirements and standards that they were trying to meet or achieve. And then with that, I think there was between the city of Detroit and Wayne County west of Detroit, where over 3,000 applicants were gone through, and they did it in a matter of days. And each one of the applications was scored by three different individuals to ensure that there wasn't bias and would come to a fair way to distribute or prioritize how the money should be distributed to individuals. Okay, Wendy, please.
We currently use Wayne Metro for our others, the CD BG, the non-COVID related, for the low to moderate income, for that national objective, that portion of the pot of money for CD BG for rental assistance. We have reached out to them last week. This is right up their alley of something to administer, they've got the resources, they understand how this works. They would administer it however we would prefer them to. So if we have certain parameters we want them to use when having people meet certain criteria, they would do that for us. They are currently coming up with what they would charge us to do that, so we're trying to find out what that fee would be. And then after we find out what that fee would be, we need to make the determination whether we think that's a fee we want them to, we want to pay them for, if there's an internal criteria, I mean, this money's going to go pretty quick. When you really think about it, you know, if you think everybody gets a couple thousand dollars, it's 90 people, so it's not a lot. So, we're first going to find out what the fee they would charge for that would be, and then make the determination of if we want to go that route, and if we do, then what are those parameters we want them to follow? And Summer did reach out and offer to help us with that, so we'd love to take her up with that, because there's a few things to consider. This isn't necessarily just needing to meet the low to moderate income threshold. There's people of all varieties of income levels that are impacted by this, so it's just a decision, and there's many things we can use to set what those priorities would be. So, Summer's input would be greatly appreciated to help come up with those parameters once we get to, through this five-day waiting period and finding out what the cost would be from Wayne Metro to administer that for us.
Yeah, I look forward to helping you, just let me know when you want to meet.
Okay, thanks, Summer.
I believe that the next, okay, if we approve this tonight, then Wendy goes off, she does the homework and puts together the framework, then we get Metro, Wayne Metro to bid or give us an estimate, then we'll come back to the board and say, okay, here's the plan, this is what it looks like. Does that make sense, Wendy? We'll bring it back to board for final approval, or?
If that's what the board wants to do, is the final approval of what the parameters would be, we can do that. Or if the board is comfortable with Summer and having a cup, you know, having maybe three board members sit in and approve it, what, it's whatever the board wants to do. Typically, we don't set all the, have all the CD BG rules go through the township board, but whatever the board desires, what we'll do.
So maybe the best way to handle it is if there's any other board members that would like to participate in this process, please let Amy know and then figure out how we get you included. Okay? Good, I like that. Yes, Stephen?
Um, Wendy, normally we get about $300,000, $350,000 for CD BG. When does that usually come in and what timeframe do we make decisions on that one?
So, again, this is in addition to last year's grand allocation of the $300,000. We were awarded for this upcoming year, I think it's a, I think it was in the $350,000 range, somewhere, somewhere around there. Don't quote me on that yet, for the 2020 program. Since we've been closed, we haven't started the initiation, the initial process. Typically, we have the different communities and the different vendors who want to come in and apply for a portion of that grant dollars that comes in, and they speak in front of the advisory council, for the advisory council to figure out how they want to divvy up those funds. We haven't changed that process yet, we would still plan on having the people come in and let us know what they would like to spend the dollars on, or the advisory council anyways. I think at this point, we'll still do the 30-day comment period for that grant, although HUD did waive that requirement, so we could do a, the five-day grant for that as well. But I think we're gonna hold off, we don't, that's not actually due until August at this point in time. So, our plan at this point in time is to follow the normal protocol for that. We'll probably have a Zoom meeting set up and get all the vendors online so they can present when they want to. So, that's about $350,000. Normally, at this point in time, we're, beginning of May, we're holding that public hearing with the advisory council, so it's pushed back a little bit. But that wouldn't be the first time, a couple years ago, it got pushed back because we weren't even sure if the government was going to allocate any dollars towards CD BG, and we, and we didn't remember that on time. So, we've got a little bit of time before we need to push anything for that. So that'll be hopefully coming towards the board, my goal would be at the middle to end of June.
I was just wondering if there was any of that money that can be used for this, or if the rules prohibited that, like rent and things like that.
No, absolutely, you can use rent for the regular CD BG program, that just has to go towards the low and moderate income people. This one's just a little bit different, because these are people impacted by COVID only.
Okay, we can see how much of this we have left and decide on.
Yep, absolutely.
The board about that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, yeah, Anne Marie, please.
So, I think, thank you, that we were talking about earlier the phone calls, and I'm, I know that most of the phone calls that I made, like you said, yeah, that people were asking for food or to get connected to food, or someone delivering them food or anything like that. So in terms of these determinations, did anyone else hear that anyone, I know there was maybe one or two people that needed rental assistance. Did we see a lot more in those calls?
No, no, the majority were, I think there's a total out of the, I forget what gross number was, 1,600 or, we shared the number of calls we made total. I think there's about 50 that specifically wanted food assistance or 50 households. And then from that, it was errands and simple things.
Yeah, that's good to know that we don't have the great of the needs, that's good. I think a lot of people did like the calls. I didn't get a list this week, so do I, I'm assuming that we're done with the calls, we're finished?
We've called everybody that we had on our list.
Okay, great, good job, good job, everyone.
They see no additional or comment this time. I'd like to, before I close the public hearing, make a call for public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Clerk Seagres, could you look to see if anybody's raised their hand for public comment?
I am watching the list. And I see nothing.
Okay, based on that, could we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
If those in favor of the motion as presented, please say.
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman? You're on mute, I assume that was aye, but I can't tell.
Aye.
Anne Williams?
Aye.
All right.
I'd like to call for a motion to amend the Citizen Participation, Participation Plan as presented this evening and in the core documents that were supplied.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to adopt the amended 2019 annual action plan and authorize the submission of 2019 amended annual action plan, CD BG slash CV, to the Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD.
Support.
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek? We can't.
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Anne Williams?
Aye.
Final motion is move to approve the following budget amendment.
Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget amendment, increase revenue to the account number for $2,000, $215,200, and increase expense to the other offset account for $215,200.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Anne Williams?
Aye.
Here it is.
Now, we're going to move into the general calendar. First item up to you, one is consider approval of City Works Asset Management Software renewal for annual maintenance and technical.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the software annual, software maintenance and technical support agreement for City Works from Steakhouse Systems Incorporated at 11075 South State Street, Suite 24, and Sandy, Utah, 84070, and approve a purchase order not to exceed the amount of $40,000.
Second.
In summary, as part of annuals Canton Township, as part of Canton Township's effort to more effectively automate information processing, municipal services utilizes City Works Asset Management Software. This GIS-centric software is used to record and process service requests from residents, businesses, and staff, as well as track labor, material, and equipment costs on work orders associated with maintaining over $300 million worth of water distribution, sanitary sewer collection system, stormwater, and fleet assets within the community. Requesting approval of the annual maintenance and technical support for City Works software application at this time. Are there any questions for either Jade or Wendy at this time? Any board questions? Is there one, two-year? Be no questions? Call for a vote, Clerk Seagres? Roll call, vote.
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Anne Williams?
Aye.
Next step, we have item G2, consider approval of the Merit Commission's recommendation of compensation plan during COVID-19 until it resumes full operation of its departments.
Supervisor, I move to approve the Merit Commission's recommendation to adopt a compensation plan for merit employees beginning May 1, 2020, until such time that the township opens and resumes operation of its departments.
Support.
Terms of a summary, on April 24, 2020, the Merit Commission approved a recommendation to execute compensation, compensation plan beginning May 1. Such plan shall be in place until the township opens and resumes its full operations of its departments. Merit employees will take up to a 40% furlough, be required to use eight hours of PTO comp per week, and work the remaining two days as directed by their supervisor to meet the needs of the township. Is there any questions that the board or comments they would like to make? All the directors spent many, many, many hours these past several weeks, helping this plan and getting us to this point. So, there's, a lot of effort has gone on behind the scenes, and we've got to thank every one of the directors and Chad and Chris Stockline. Everybody participated, it got us to where we are this evening. Are there any questions or comments any of the trustees would like to make at this time? Everybody's had an opportunity to read, view the packet or the documents? All right, any no questions or comments at this time? Roll call, vote, please.
Trust, Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Anne Williams?
Aye.
And next item on our agenda is item G3. Consider approval of the ASME and TPO AM letters of agreement outlining how employees will be compensated as far as the May 1, 2020, until the township opens and resumes full operations of its department.
This is in the form of two motions, Mr. Supervisor. I move to approve the LOAs, or letter of agreements that have been agreed to by the ASME and TPO AM unions.
Support.
On April 21, 2020, ASME and TPO AM boards entered into letters of agreement which outlined the compensation plan beginning May 1, 2020 through May 30, 2020. ASME and TPO AM employees will take also the 40% furlough, up to a 40%, no, a 40% furlough, be required to use eight hours of PTO comp per week, and work the remaining two days as required by the supervisor to meet the needs of the township. In addition, all continuing part-time employees will be laid off. Again, this is in line with the Merit Commission-approved policies that we just voted on. Any questions of the directors? Questions of the directors? Go ahead, Stephen.
Um, I see, this is, this one is for the full month of May. So, I'm assuming that if something changed, I doubt it, that we would just come back and redo it if we were going to increase hours towards the end of May, or something like that.
Exactly, yes. Right now, the governor, I think, has communicated pretty clearly through the middle of May. So, we're hoping that we'll get closer back to normal sometime in May, but we'll see, right?
And is the plan to sort of take these on a month at a time?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Or as the governor communicates.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Again, Summer?
Um, I spoke to Corinne the other day about seeing she can get in touch with somebody at the unemployment agency. Were you able to make that connection?
I did today, somebody.
Congratulations.
I think we had four different people out there working on it, so we did get a call back. We are working on getting through the process that we needed to. We had started part of it on Friday, but the person who called today had a lot of great information, so. And it was consistent with what we thought, which helped, so. Anyway, we're well on our way, and we have a cell phone number, so. Very happy.
That's great.
So.
Anne Marie?
Yes, thanks, yeah, thanks for all the hard work on this. I know it's difficult, and to the employees, just from, because I know many people, including family members. The unemployment system is not easy, and a lot of people are staying on very late in the night to get to it. So that's just a hint to people who are in unemployment, and also our state reps. If you have difficulty getting through, call your state rep office. That's been, you know, the help of a lot of people, just call, and they do have point people that can help get you through this and take a case down. So, I know a lot of people struggle with this, and just want to let people know there is a way to get help.
Any additional, okay, Corinne, please.
Just for the board, we actually will file everything on behalf of our employees.
Good.
Except the ones that we've laid off, but all of the other ones that we're doing through the work share will actually file it all. They'll have to do some paperwork to set up their, um, their, how they, how they get their payment, if they're going to do a direct deposit. But other than that, we'll file it. And we've been on some webinars, so just for the public, if you are on Monday, Monday, your day comes up on Monday, call in the evening. You'll get through much easier than if you're calling during the daytime hour. So they said that is probably the worst day and the worst time to call is Monday. So, leave it till later in the evening, you're much better off.
Good advice. Okay, no additional comments or questions at this time. A call for a roll vote on the first motion.
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagres, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Clerk Seagres, if you could, the second motion.
Supervisor, I move to approve that as the LOAs are scheduled to end on May 30, should the township and the union agree to extend the terms of the agreement as outlined, no additional actions will be required of the board.
Support.
All right, those, okay, and I suppose it should be value add here to add, we kind of add, we're addressing Steve's concern. There's, if we need to extend based on the governor, this allows.
I have a question here, so, um, if we were to go into June, then, under this current system, what would staffing look like?
The way we have set this up with the work share program is with as much flexibility as we can. We're setting it up with two plans, which parallel the furlough percentage, which is 40% or 20%. And then, within that, we have set up units, so it will allow us to bring people back as we open up different areas of the township. So for instance, if leisure services isn't prepared to go up and operational with all of their employees, they can stay on. This plan is good for 52 weeks, so we've set it up for 52 weeks, doesn't mean we have to be on it for 52 weeks, but it's better than us having to go back and reset up these plans and input all of those 203 employees at that time. So we set it up to give as much flexibility, so if, if you need, like, the clerk's office needs to bring people back in to a full-time capacity earlier, they can do that. The challenge that we face in this is that the furlough is really an offset to expenditures, which we know we are losing revenues, so that's really the driving force of the losses, the loss of, you know, state shared revenues and predicted income. So, that's, it gives us flexibility to bring people back into the organization as we need to do that. And we report every two weeks, so we'll be able to report whether or not they're unemployed or not at that point or furlough. Does that help you?
Yeah, okay, so, so the answer would be, starting, if we, if this extends, right, the township and the union agree this needs to extend, but we're into June, and I am required, requiring 40 hours of work out of my, out of the positions inside the clerk's office, that this would not be a hindrance to that.
No, you could bring your employee back, we set you up as a totally separate unit, knowing that your operational needs may be different than somebody else's. So if you were to bring your employees back on, then you would report zero percentage furlough for those weeks, and they would be paid regular time at that point.
All right.
I think to that end, Mike, you've asked a deeper question, and I'm sure you appreciate. Everything's here evolving, and the longer this thing goes on, impact through the finances are also going to be evolving and changing on us. So, just like, there's been a ton of communication to get us to these RBAs, right, that's going to continue on, so we'll continue to meet entire leadership team, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And as new data comes in, we'll get sharing, obviously, at that level, as well as with the full board as things evolve and move forward. Is that fair, Mike? move forward. Is that fair, Mike?
Sure. Yeah, I feel comfortable with what was, what's in front of me and what was just discussed. Yeah.
Those efforts are going to continue until we do get back to normal again.
Right, yeah.
Any additional or questions or comments on that item? Roll call, vote for the motion or is it behind us?
Anthony? Oh, yeah, that's I made the motion.
I supported, I believe. Yes.
All right, Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagis, aye, Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
And Williams?
Aye. And that was our second motion, correct, Mike?
Correct.
All right, so that concludes Yeah, John, if we did that last time, too. Consistent. Okay, that does conclude our meeting this evening. Is there any additional staff comment at this time? Any additional staff comment? None? Oh, Greg, please, go ahead.
And I mentioned Pheasant Run and Fellows Creek are both open and operational now. No carts. We're happy to have golfers out there and call ahead, make your tee time. It's getting booked up quick, so.
We don't have, we don't have pole carts, right? People have to bring their own if they.
That's correct. Yes, at Pheasant Run, since typically we are carts only, we don't own any pole carts, I believe. Fellows Creek has eight. We were going to look to borrow some from them, but they did not have many either. So I mean, I'm amazed at the number of people showing up with pole carts.
A month ago, there was a run on hand sanitizers. Now there's a run on pole carts. And how many tee times were open today, Greg?
Unfilled?
Yes.
I know we had probably I was out there at five, a little about five fifteen and the parking lot was packed. People are lining up to get out. So we have our tee times are spread apart twenty minutes apart right now, just to ease our way back in. So not as many tee times as we typically could handle, but we'll probably, we'll be, we had a lot of golfers. I'll have a report in the morning that'll tell me how many people went out today. Believe it was over a hundred yesterday.
Chad or Chris, anything to share right now in terms of public safety or?
Just let the board know, thank you for the support. On the police side, our health is good and the protocols seem to be working. And again, thanks for all the support and getting the PPE for our employees. They're doing a great job.
I would echo the same thing that, you know, thank you for the support and thank the community for the support and the donations that continue to come in. They're much appreciated and they're put to good use.
Perfect, thank you. All right, seeing no other comment at this time, I'll call for a motion to close.
Roll move. Second.
Favorite roll call?
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Seagis, aye, Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Ann Williams?
Aye.
This meeting, thank you. Everybody be safe, be good.